Good evening and welcome to the City of Isanty Committee of a Whole Meeting for Tuesday, September 20th. I'd like to call this meeting to order if we could all rise for pledge allegiance. Doing roll call, all council members are present. Any public comment at this time? We have such a huge audience, nobody wants to come up and chat, so we'll move on to the committee meeting items. E1, Public Works Updates.
Mayor Johnson, a member of City Council, to give you public work updates, what we have is for streets, and we think we talked about last spring with white paint kind of being a struggle to get this, this summer to paint. Were able to find some kind of, kind of late in June, and were able to paint the parade route, some crosswalks and some of the stop bars and parking lots, City Hall and liquor store being those parking lots that we were able to get done. Potholes have an ongoing task this summer and will continue with them as needed. For storms, staff has discovered a couple of sinkholes. Credit Union Drive, behind Rum River BMX, Dogwood this past summer, were a couple of them we found, another one showed up last week on Rum River Drive in Maplewood, those have all been filled. We generally take some, check them out and verify what's going on with them, fill them with wet concrete and top them off with asphalt at the end, just to verify there's nothing more serious going on. Staff went through some in-depth training on the street super this summer for maintenance and repairs. That training was through McQueen Equipment. Staff will continue to do some brush cutting and storm ponds this fall and winter as routine maintenance only. The Creekhead's Martin Landing had a significant washout take place with some high water that we received. That was right at the creek where it enters the river. That had been repaired by DW Companies and just an FYI on that, I went down and checked it out this morning and that washout is back. So I called DW Companies and I talked to Jason Cook too, and they're going to verify what's going on and get it fixed again. So it's, it's back down there again, so hopefully we can get it resolved and find out what's happening down there. For sewers, as far as the lift station pump replacement, it's nearing completion, we're still waiting on pumps for the main lift station. And the Gorman Rupp, non-submersible pumps at the three green box lift stations, either above ground ones, waiting on those pumps to get done. During the whole process of getting these lift station pumps in there, the motor starters at Three Haven Lift Station needed to get replaced. We had some upgrades for the wiring that needed to get done at Subway Lift Station, and there are some other adjustments needing done to the Carlson Lift Station, which were all discovered as part of this lift station pump replacement, so that was all good to find during that process, and those have all been fixed and those are all working real good now. Air release valves are also nearing completion with the exception of the main lift station and Subway Lift Station. We're still waiting on those to arrive. Sewer journey will begin, you know, as usual sometime early this fall, we're kind of trying to button some things up first, so I would say probably early October or something like that, that'll start. Water meter changeout should be beginning soon, the data collectors and repeaters have all been installed, staff underwent some training on the new meters, learn more about the process of installation, the meters themselves, what they're capable of. We'll probably start with the city-owned facilities first in that meter changeout. Staff has completed the first steps renewing the wellhead protection plan, but the scoping one meeting discussed water usage, staff will continue on this completion for the next few months and be completed July of 2023 next year, so it's kind of a two-step process. New doors were installed at the salt silos at the water treatment plant, and a new door will soon be installed here at the water tower as part of the CIP plan. As you know, the archery range is completed and it is being used every day, you see somebody over there shooting at the archery range, today there were two guys over there shooting now, so it's being used. I marked some trees in Mattson Park and along the Public Works, along Isanty Parkway that are dead, there's some caution tape around those, so they kind of continue to die off, trying to find out what's going on there, but they'll see some of those get cut out of there again here sometime this fall. There were some additional trees that got planted in Bluebird Park yesterday, and if you didn't know, it really looked sharp, although it made a huge difference in the park and the trees were planted, so turned out good. That's what I have for Public Works Updates.
Got a question for you. Well, first, archery range, awesome job. It really turned out nice.
I think I'll pass it on to the guys.
Um, the park benches along Main Street downtown, are those city park benches or each business kind of they want, they put their own out there?
I believe they were donated by the chamber years ago.
Years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there was that organization that we used to have, which is also where those flower boxes came from, in front of like retail meets and stuff. There used to be a, um, an organization that did things like that, like the tree that they decorated outside of City Hall way back in the day. I believe it was all part of that.
Okay.
They look shabby, or what?
No, I just noticed the one out in front of the wooden churn creamery on that side. Half the bench is covered in a bush.
Oh yeah, I know which one you're talking about, the one that's out, the wooden crane or whatever, the wooden cron or kern, nah. Wooden churn. Yeah, it's still open.
I didn't know if that was our responsibility.
A lot of them go to weekend hours.
If it's theirs.
The shrubbery needs to be trimmed?
Yeah.
I know it.
I don't know if the shrubbery, I don't know if the shrubbery belonged to the city, it might belong for them to trim their own shrubs up.
Might be their responsibility, yeah.
I think so.
That's all, yeah.
As far as I'm concerned, just go trim them. I mean, it ain't going to take you but five minutes or whatever.
We can, we can put it on our, just give them a letter and we can trim them, I can do that, add that to our list, that's all right with everything, is that kosher?
I mean, let's just.
If you see it, it looks pretty bad.
Yeah.
That's what I would do, get, get the permission and then go trim them.
Get ahold of them before, just to ask about that space there, and I can't ever get ahold of them.
No, Dennis is not easy to get ahold of.
Saturday, Sunday.
See, I've got them there on Saturday and Sunday too, just because I want to find out about that creamery space, you know, and I've never seen them there when they're supposed to be opening.
He, he opens and closes whenever he feels like it.
Yeah.
Anyway, yeah, I don't want to create more work for you guys, but that's why I just, I noticed.
The city to do it, we can, we can do it, so we give the option when that comes around.
He's gonna, I, I agree with Councilman Lundin, he's just gonna have you do it guaranteed, but it would be, as he always says, it'd be better to ask for permission than forgiveness.
Even if you left a note on his door and said, hey, we trim these brushes, just, you know.
So the bench is more usable.
Yeah.
Bench is more usable.
He's not going to say anything.
Yeah. It's no problem.
I think I've met that guy once in four years, six years actually of living here. Four years as being the mayor. Oh yeah, yeah, yeah. Any other questions, comments for Mr. Sylvester? We'll move on to E2 then, I believe is yours as well, Matt, the cleanup day?
Yeah, so just wanted to have some discussion on the cleanup day, and I mean, we all kind of know what it is, and it's just we have residents to bring stuff in that they have laying around their house, big items, small items, whatever that might be. The prices are set for cleanup day by our refuse hauler, which now is ACE, they set the prices for items that come in. The number of residents that have been using, utilizing cleanup day the last few years has been declining. We get complaints after around cleanup day of our pricing of what things cost for cleanup day. So this kind of came up a little bit last spring where I had this Evergreen Recycling reached out to me, it was like right around cleanup day, it kind of already started, we started gathering items, or, you know, people had made payment for this company, kind of reached out to me, but kind of wanted to have this discussion and see where council wanted, wanted to be at with it, but this Evergreen Recycling is an option, we don't have to go there, but it's an option, if they can come in, they'll provide the dumpsters, they asked that we have one Public Works guy on site for that day, they'll provide the dumpsters for 250 bucks each. They will offer a third rollout box for scrap iron only, and they'll split the proceeds for that scrap iron that might come in in cleanup day with us, they probably get a better deal on scrap iron when they sell it because they haul more scrap iron, for us, it's like a once a year thing, they're gathering scrap iron, they get a better deal on scrap iron if they're selling more of it. They're, I kind of briefly laid out what their prices are and what our prices are
To be clear, Matt, if I could just interrupt, just for council to be aware, we don't set the prices of the cleanup day, when he's saying our prices, that is set by the contract that we have with our refuse hauler, so either it's Waste Management, ACE, whoever's our hauler, and we have a contract with them, they set those prices. We don't have any influence on what those prices will be, just so you're aware.
And we don't stack anything more onto that price, it's just, we pay what the hauler pays, or what the hauler tells us to pay.
Tell, yep, they, yeah, we, we'll gather the payment for them, that kind of stuff, and it gets all turned over to them, you know, Public Works keep track, how many TVs, how many washing machines, how many, how many items that are to come in that they charge for, those items are all tracked, so when it's handed over, that's, there's, there's a, you know, a match on that, on what things are. So I kind of just put together some, you can kind of look at the, some of the appliances, you know, we would charge 20, this Evergreen Recycling would charge 10, for appliances with a free on like refrigerator, they would charge 15, we would charge 20. It kind of goes down the line, some items are fairly close, TVs over 40 inches are 50 bucks a piece. Some items, like a couch, we would charge 55, they would charge 30. So I have our cleanup day, our last flyer in your packet, plus whatever Evergreen Recycling, they would charge, you know, for theirs, to give you a kind of a brief, I didn't list everything, but you can kind of get a comparison, a little bit on what's there. If we went to residents, another option would be this, if we went to residents and said, you know what, we're not going to charge you nothing for anything you bring in this year, and I had Mike run the numbers on that, and if we didn't charge residents nothing, last year would have cost the city 1,500 bucks for recycling day. So bring your TV in, bring your washing machine, whatever, bring your appliances in, we'll pay for that, we'll cover the charge, that would have been 1,500 bucks to us last year. Now, with that being said, the number of people that keep using cleanup day has been declining, so if we said we were taking things for nothing, that number might jump up quite a bit, because now we're not charging, people might be more apt to bring them in here instead of sending it back with their guy getting their new refrigerator wherever from.
And we're less likely to find them in the ditch on the roadside somewhere versus turning them in.
Correct, yeah. The third option really to be, be nothing at all, just keep holding recycle day the way we have it. Our, our contract with the refuse hauler is up this coming May of 2023, so it would be a good time, if we're going to change something, it'd be a good time to change it this coming year before we sign a new contract with the refuse hauler. A new company, might be ACE, might be Waste Management, might be LePage, who knows?
Is that for all the city garbage? Or is that just for that day, the contract?
We have ACE for citywide.
We have ACE, but it, it's in, cleanup day is in our contract right now, it's cleanup day, they, they don't charge us for the dumpsters right now by contract, but they do charge us a dumping fee and a trucking fee. So that's like 259 bucks is what they would charge us.
It's not citywide, we don't have single source like Cambridge does, that is just for city facility garbage hauling.
Yep, okay, yeah.
The only problem I see with us not, if we just said we're not going to charge you for this, that one person that's going to come walking in that would bring one refrigerator in is going to bring four. That's the problem I see.
Some people do get paid to haul things away, they're going to come here if it's free to get rid of.
They're, what they're going to do is they got a friend that lives in town, I'm going to bring it over to you, you're going to get rid of it for me. That's what I see that being a problem. And I, I'll be honest with you, if they want to get rid of it any other time of the year, they got to pay, I don't care what, if they go up to the, the weigh station, they're paying to get rid of it. We're making it convenient for them where they can come in one spot. I don't think we should, I think we should continue to charge whatever the going rate is, but if we, maybe we need to get it out sooner and saying, hey, listen, this is what it costs to get rid of it.
Is it?
And that's all there's to it, I mean, the city, unfortunately, we, we can't.
We're not charging any more, any less than what they're charging us.
We don't have any control over what they're charging us.
Other company though, was they were going to bill directly, they would have people there, right, so.
This Evergreen Recycling, they would have, they would have two people there, they would handle the payment, they just ask that one Public Works employee be there as well.
And right now, they're having to come and pay here at City Hall and then go, right, so I mean, that maybe would get more use, just that it was more simple, you could just show up there and pay, plus then you wouldn't feel the complaints at City Hall, because they would, pretty obvious that we're not.
And their prices are less.
Yeah.
What, is that something that we could, if, you know, if we still wanted to say use ACE for everything else but recycling day, can we somehow put that in the contract that, it's up to our discretion who we use for that, one day a year kind of thing, or?
My recommendation would be that we remove it from the RFP and the contract, and then come time when, if we need to and we chose not to go with this Evergreen, we would just consult and contact all the different agencies and see who would.
Was the best rate at the time?
Yeah. We just separate it from the contract and do it on a annual basis as we determine best.
I think that'd be a good way to go.
I think that'd be a good, I kind of agree.
I agree.
And then we can shop around for the best rate for the residents, and then if, then if that company happens to be the, the one, then you guys really don't have to do anything, but one guy show up.
Someone's good.
All right, we'll move on to E3 then, the Tax Increment Finance District, number nine and 10 update.
All right, thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Council, so we did have Northland Securities, who's our financial consultant, review our TIF nine and 10. These are things that have been hanging out for quite a while, and Mike has been working on trying to clean them up, because there was a lot of not great documentation kept on these, and TIFs can be very complicated, measures that the city uses for great purposes, but can be, if you don't keep really good diligent notes and documents, it can be very challenging, so we asked for Northland to look into those. TIF 10, we'll start with that one, and that's part in our industrial area, was decertified prior to Mike coming here in 2017, and he's just been trying to track down the funds that are sitting in that account, what we can do if anything. Upon review of Northland Security, really, we can't do much, if anything with that, and by statute, we're required to close out and do something with those funds, so the recommendation is, and staff agrees, and Stephanie's also been in consultation with us, because she works a lot with TIF districts, is to give the money back to the county, which is what we would need to do, and then a city gets the third portion back, county gets a third, and the school district gets a third, and it closes out TIF 10, which should have already been done, just hadn't been cleaned up. So that's the best way to proceed on that. TIF nine is a very strange area, a lot of different parcels, but at the end of the day, it was a redevelopment district, it was created, created in 2005. It was a way that the city was hoping to maybe deal with some of our structures that were not compliant at that time, back in the day, but also be a pay-go note for Federated, that's initially why it was created. There were some thoughts back in the day of 2005 that they maybe could do something else with it, but really, the funds are pretty tied up. We do have this, because of the, has a pay-go note with Federated till 2032, we do need to keep this open, but we do need to follow statute and return the funds on an annual basis, which had not been done, so staff is going to work to do that. Again, any funds that come back, which would be a third to the city, third to the county, third to the school district, does go into the general fund as revenue, so we'll see those numbers come into play, but at least it's cleaning up these loose ends that have been out there for a while. But we will need to keep that on the books for about another 10 years or so, but then we'll be doing a report, well, we've been doing reporting, but we'll be doing what we need to do with those funds annually now. So that was just an update. If there's anything else that we can do with those funds as we become aware of them, we'll bring that forward, but at least we'll be doing all of our obligations as we need to do.
So a TIF nine, if I am understanding that correctly, that was used to, for a business or a building to help them regenerate, get that building business back going again?
It was created with some possibilities of maybe reviving the facade of some of these businesses, helping with some structural issues like coalbows potentially type businesses back in the day, that was maybe the intent, it never came into fruition. We did find a chart from 2005 that had some possibilities, but you have to spend the funds on an annual basis, 75%, if I recall correctly, and really gives you, we figured like $10,000 a year to work with. Stephanie kind of looked into it, and may, will continue to seek out opportunities if there's something that we can use to bring in more funds, trying to utilize those, we will do so, but it's such a, a fine, fine, finite way that you can use those funds that
I was looking like maybe if there was, maybe it was something to say to bring in a family restaurant in Isanty, if we could use it for something like that.
It couldn't be used for that.
Yeah, we looked into, trust me, every single possible way I could use that money, I begged.
But I just, I'm just, I was just brainstorming it, you know, thinking that that might not be a bad idea.
It was originally created to redevelop the rail site that Federated is on, so rail sites generally are pretty limited to use, so you can create a redevelopment district around that, and so that's what that was, an old rail yard that was redeveloped, and they created a really large district, and the project area is large also, but the district, because of the way it was set up originally, doesn't allow us to use the money like we would like to, so it wasn't set up in our, for our benefit really, so unfortunately, but if we do find a way that we could use $10,000 a year in coming up, we will try.
Yeah. So that was my update on TIF, and then we have an added agenda item, which is Stephanie's going to give us an update on how Amp It Up event went at the Bluebird Park at the New Amphitheater, and let us know her thoughts on that, and we thought there could be maybe a, a discussion about what events we have out there moving forward, so I'll let you take it away.
Um, good evening, I think that we were pretty nervous at seven o'clock as people trickled in, but we looked around a little while later and it was pretty busy there. I think we had a great turnout, a lot of really positive comments of people saying, I really hope they're all here, or, which we were surprised, we, we weren't sure at all what the, what the comments were going to be, and it ended up being a really great night, we got lucky, the storms went right around us, and lightning got a little close one time, but other than that, it was, it was a great, I think, turnout and night, and I don't know what you guys have been hearing from the community, but we've just heard positive so far.
I wasn't able to get up there, but when I got home, I could hear them from my house.
How did the sound come out of the amphitheater?
That was impressive.
I talked to a lot of people that night, I think I spent four hours walking around and asking, you know, what do you like better, the street dance or here, what would you rather see forward on? I think it was 50/50, you were there, so you could probably comment on some of it as well. A lot of them liked the park, they just wanted more lighting in that park. I think the sound was phenomenal, I did speak to a few people on Third Avenue and Isanty Parkway that lived there. She said she thought, I mean, 70-year-old woman, I was telling Josie, she thought it was awesome, she sat up until 10 o'clock listening to the music, when she went to bed, she closed her windows, turned her air on, and went right to bed.
I actually did drive when I left at 9:45 to go see how far away I could hear it, because I was, wanted to test it out and make sure we had provided letters that went far enough, because usually we do the 350 feet, and I, the sound stopped before I hit whiskey on Isanty Parkway, so I was probably about halfway down the road, and I was like, I can't hear it at all anymore, so I thought that was pretty good, but, and the trees that we just added should help with that buffer also.
How did the band like playing in it?
They loved it, they said it was way better than the downtown stage, they said it was very, very beautiful facility, so that was.
And they didn't have any reverb problems or noises?
Nothing.
No, they said it was just great.
Power issues?
Nope, nope, it was, it was seamless for, for event planning, I mean, usually when we come on the Saturday, it's a lot of setup, Public Works is there all day, we're there helping, making sure the band has all the things they need, and usually running around finding things and.
In Public Works, all they did was put the picnic tables, garbage cans in there on a Friday, and they didn't have to be there all weekend, right?
And we did rent 10 extra picnic tables, and that seemed to be a hit, people really liked that, we got some positive feedback from that, and they were full the entire night.
They brought their own chairs, we saw them trickle in, wife, husband, kids in tow, I mean, it was.
A lot more kids, a different crowd, I think, than what we normally see at the sports camps.
I heard the vendors, vendors were really awesome, I heard, the vending was awesome, music was awesome.
Minus one that didn't show, right?
Right.
Yeah, otherwise they all showed, they all.
And then the lighting was the biggest issue.
Where did the vendors park?
We put them in a, like a circle around.
On the outskirts.
Outside, okay.
So you could see all of them, so some people were like, wow, there's way more vendors here than normal, which we're like, not, there's not.
They're just all, you can see them all, I suppose, yeah. How about parking?
No issue with parking, a lot of people walked, the parking lots didn't seem too overcrowded, but they were full, but it wasn't an issue.
I don't, I mean, I mean, when we talked about this way back, you know, we had the discrepancy of taking away the street dance element, I don't, I'm not going to disagree with that, but I, I think it would be to meet halfway, to have one here, have one there, have one here, have one there.
I like the one in August with the car show, that combo, keep that downtown, I think, put the rest of them in the banjo, why not?
I don't know, I like, I like 50/50 myself.
Just a halfway point.
I hear both, I hear both ways.
I totally agree, as what, you know, Mr. Burgley has always said, he said that was the street dance was to rejuvenate Main Street, but I do have to say this every time there is one there, and I got to do something in town during the day? It's a son of a gun, I had to park like four blocks away and I'm old and crippled, I ain't, I can't walk that damn far, so, I mean, and I went to get my haircut, and I had to walk four blocks because everything was blocked off. I, I understand the businesses aspect of that saying, that is a problem for them, but I do, you know, the street dance is a street dance, but, you know, this amphitheater was, you know, the future of what could happen in town, and I, I think, I think maybe a 50/50 compromise is not a bad way to do it, and can always grow from change from there. Matt, do you have temporary lights, generated light poles like the Fire Department has?
We don't, no.
I wonder.
There's a plan though to put lights in that park.
Yes, we did talk about with the bathrooms being added, there's a way to increase lighting from the bathrooms from that direction, and that's where the lighting will come from, we'll also, we could also increase the light pole, the third light pole that was recommended when they did the lighting study, the lumen study, is in that corner, so.
And I think if the light pole was working that was there, that the energy company decided to chop into and cut off, I think if that was working, I mean, we could even taken, how many lights are on that pole, Matt?
I think there's four.
We could even turn one of them if we really had to. There's more lighting.
There was some discussion on that when the poles got put in early on, was not to interfere with Redbirds at night during a game or something like that, so there was some concern with them lights if they came on for an event or something. They talk about if you're at home plate now and the, the one light out, straight out from like center field or something like that, that it's like it's advantageous to the, to the, to the pitcher but not the batter, I don't know, I've never been there and watched it and really seen something like that played, but I know that Dave England had came to me and brought that up to me about the lights early on, just FYI, that they had, Redbirds had concerns about lighting facing more into their field, so something to think about.
There's a light at the top, on top of the sliding hill, too?
Yeah, there's two of them.
There's two of them that face the bottom of the slide.
How far out to the bottom do they expand, that lighting?
They cover the whole hill, most definitely, and they just put the flagpole light in there, and that's the one, they put that one in there, they cut, there's a light here if this was the hill, right at, right at the backside of the, and then there's a light over here that faces the hill, and there's nothing on this side, right?
The playground was one of the areas, I know.
The playground and then Third Avenue, there's nothing but that light pole light.
Yes.
The reason I asked about the generated lights, it might, it might be some advantageous for the Public Works to have one of those lights anyway for emergency, and then it would be another way of cutting down, having to install more lights, dual-purpose lighting.
How loud are they anyway, when, I don't know, how loud are they when they run?
They're not that loud.
Not too bad, yeah.
I mean, that would be one, you could probably put, would put that out towards parking area or something, a little bit further away.
We, we have used the ones at the Fire Department, we had a water main leak on Centennial Day, the Fire Department let us use their lights overnight that time, so it's, it's an option, but I'm, you know.
It's not a bad idea, like Councilman Lundin says, to have on hand in case of an emergency situation.
And then you would, then it could be a dual-purpose light, you could even, you know, if you needed to have even downtown, streetlight, street dance, if you got a bed dark area.
But at the same time, as Stephanie says though, there is future lighting, you know, in, in the future, that is more than likely going to take care of that problem.
We also did discuss stringing lights, we will have a lot of Christmas lights now, and possibly using the, there's different ways you can string lights throughout, even if it's just bordering the pathway, or just to help illuminate that side of the park. We have electric there that we can plug into now that's available too, and it'll add to the ambiance, I think, because you don't want it to be too bright, because that takes away also, but.
I know that band had some great lighting that would shoot out in a crowd and it kind of freak you out every now and then, but it was cool.
So Mayor and Council, I heard that maybe the August one we'd keep downtown is the preference for the June, then it's going to be alternating.
Or August, August.
Right, June and August would be downtown?
No, the, the car show. The car show.
She's going with two, which two?
Oh, oh, oh.
So, because Jordan, our park staff, will be starting to look up bands within the next two months. It'd be helpful if we knew which ones you wanted downtown, which ones at the amphitheater, so he can inform that.
We did talk about this today, and we were thinking that the June and September ones would be the good, or the August and July would be the ones to keep downtown, we were thinking, but.
What do you think of mosquitoes?
Yeah, I suppose, because you got Jubilee Days in July and.
So we were just thinking, there was a reason when we looked at the calendar of how things met, that that, those were the two that made the most sense for us because of other events that were happening over in the park also.
The day before.
Like BMX?
Yeah.
There are a lot of good comments, so, I mean, and from a vendor's perspective, I mean, being able to be around the crowd. I mean, I'm not a big fan of the amphitheater to begin with, but it's nice to see it being used now that we've got it, and it was, it really was nice. I mean, it was different.
Easy for them to get down in, in there and out and everything?
Easy to get in and out, and, and nice because all the crowd can see you instead of like, you know, being down on the end of the street. But I think it was a different crowd for sure. One thing I had heard was if it's in the summertime, are we gonna bake in the heat? Which maybe those trees are gonna provide some shade. No, I haven't left over there since.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'd rather stand out in the grass when the sun is all baking than to stand on in the asphalt.
Probably true, yeah, yeah. But that was just something somebody had mentioned to me. But they thought it was night and it was kind of a different feel, more of a festival feel than a street dance feel, but good change of pace.
If it's July and August downtown, so you'd be have June and September in the park, it might not be.
Yeah, right.
Wouldn't be that bad.
Might not be horrible. Whether, whether rain-wise, it doesn't matter if it's here or there, you don't have any cover, any, more cover anywhere else.
One thing somebody had mentioned though was, like, as far as the band goes, I mean, there was a lot of people, like you said, Jeff, that brought their own chairs and stuff like that, but the band is at the ground level basically, so it was hard to see, you know, past the crowd in front of the stage, sort of, you know.
They wanted them to be elevated, which I mentioned to Ms. Wood and Stephanie.
We'd have discussed, and Jordan and I almost did rent a stage for inside there prior to this event, but we just wanted to see how it went first. We were like, well, let's not, you know, be, assume that it's gonna be an issue.
The crowd's not a bad idea, though.
There are grants through ECRAC, the East Central Regional Arts Council, that we can use for things that supplement things like amphitheaters, so our plan is in the spring possibly to see if we can get the stage purchased by them. I think Jordan looked into it. It's about $10,000 for the platforms that we could have in store on the sides.
But then we're doing $10,000 in the maintenance of that stage to where, can't we rent those for a thousand dollars?
No, most of them are aluminum.
Oh, are they?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And we'd be able to.
The indoor/outdoor carpet you can get, or it's that rubber, like rubber mat on the top of them.
And it's also something that, that we could use in other locations if we needed to for other city events, even in, inside the community center, for instance, if we have something in there, yeah.
The other thing was the ATV, UTV parking. I hate to pick on somebody in the room, but the lieutenant had the privilege to speak to somebody on that, which I understand the residents' concern. I guess I wanted to run it by you gentlemen, but they had them where you, they wanted you to park your ATVs or UTVs in the parking lot, then walk into the park. And their gripe about that was, well, it's a street dance. They segregate an area to where we can go in, we feel we're part of the crowd, the crowd feels, you know, we don't feel left out. Our machine's sitting right there, can't we do that here? I said I'd bring it up.
On street dance, they can't get anywhere near the.
They park right on the end of, right where CenturyLink is.
Motorcycles park and stuff.
Yeah, right, right where CenturyLink is, is where they park in them.
Yeah.
By the Biffy's.
That's away from the crowd and, you know.
And they're looking for that same aspect in the park.
I feel like because of the number of kids and the way that the crowd works in the park and just for the respect of every other day in the park, I feel like if we start allowing them to drive through it, it's gonna set a precedence. And I feel like you drive UTVs on the street just like you do a car throughout town, and they should park. We had a designated parking area, not in the parking lot. We did have a designated area and put it online and had signs telling them where they could park, but it was near the parking lot, but, I don't know.
From a public safety standpoint, I don't think it's advantageous to allow them to come any closer than where they designated them to park. One, for the lighting, and two, there, there was a lot of little kids there running around. And the person I had interacted with was concerned because they're gonna drive in there nice. Well, they, there's, I can't see from a public standpoint why they need to be up there. I can only see negatives that are gonna possibly lead the city to litigation if something happens due to the multiple factors of things that are going on there at once.
Throttle sticks or anything crazy like that, I suppose. Or intoxicated people on them.
Like DWI, nothing is easy as they can occur.
And I was nervous because we, we don't make the pizzas out of that little trailer, we just sell them out of there. So having even our cars come back there was making me nervous, just because there was kids everywhere. That was, yeah, I don't, I don't see, like John said, if there's, there's really no advantage to having them come closer necessarily, to be nice for them, but.
And that certain resident actually pointed out your car coming back and forth.
Yeah, right. And I, I didn't, I mean, there's no other way for us to do it, obviously, but I mean, you.
Could've carried him in from the parking lot because I said, well, how would, how do you want him to do it? There's no other way he can do it. And he goes, he could park there and walk him in. I was like, oof. I'm not touching it, but I'll bring it to the council, it'll be discussed. So here I am.
Can't they park up on the side of the street? Then you just walk right down the hill and you're right there.
I don't have any skin in the game either way, so I just said I would bring it to you guys.
I think we can further discuss that down the road, brainstorm it, in my opinion. I mean, it's not something we need to have a dead answer today. I mean, we're all made aware of it now. That's my opinion. I, I, like you said, I have no skin in the game. Personally, I, I don't like seeing them run up and down the streets, but they're gonna do what they're gonna do. I'm not gonna, can't stop it.
Bad part is three-quarters or better of them don't even have a license to.
Or they drive like.
Be on the street, you know. Yeah, and they drive, some of them, I know on my street, not all of them, but.
Do you need that special even permit for those, Elty?
Excuse me?
For the UTVs and ATVs, do you need that special vehicle permit from the PD?
I believe it's just golf carts and ATVs. The other ones should be licensed through the state.
Okay.
Now, doesn't ATVs license through the state too?
Yes, but the way the ordinance is wrote.
They got, they, the UTVs, there's what, Class A and Class B?
Type 1, Type 2.
Or Type, Type 1, Type 2, or whatever. One of the types isn't even legal for driving on the streets and within a city of Visani. And that's what you see most of. So. The, you know, the side-by-sides.
I don't know, I don't own one, nor do I want one. I have my golf cart, I'm happy with that.
Golf carts and.
Which I have a special vehicle permit for.
Yeah, golf carts and ATVs, I believe they're the only ones that you can get the special permit for, not the side-by-sides. Where you see them running around everywhere.
I even put headlights and turn signals on my golf cart.
They should make you ride on the sidewalk.
I would, but that's not allowed. Run you right over on your bike. Anything else that we needed to cover?
Stephanie, did you want to discuss putting in a concrete pad for dance floor?
Yeah, so we have been talking a lot about the benches and where we think things should go out there, and we thought this obviously gave us our, finally, our first test run at seeing what, how the space works and could be used. And we had set the dance floor at about 40 feet from the stage, from the barrier, and it was full the entire, a lot of the night, I would guess.
I sent Ms. Wood a picture of it and it was packed.
And so we think that would be a good area to expand the cement too for a dance floor and also would allow if somebody would use it for a wedding to put chairs out and just create a little bit nicer of a space for everybody to enjoy. And it's more fun to dance on a hard surface and safer for a lot of people.
How big is it, 40 by what?
40 to the width of the, the band shell.
How wide is it?
40 by 40?
I just got a quote for 1,900 square feet.
I just got a quote for a 9 by 13 for 1,800 bucks.
That ain't bad.
No, that's through a friend.
I was gonna say, I don't know, I don't know where you're getting that price, but you better take it.
That's a good guy price, so 40 by 40. Probably, I'd probably tack on another 300 to 400 at least on that 1,800 price tag I got.
I can tell you what my concrete driveway cost me.
And we don't have to decide, Mayor Council, we don't have to decide that tonight, but if there is direction from the committee for staff to explore that, see if it's something Public Works can do. We don't have to decide tonight, but if you'd like us to look into that, and then staff can bring it back, or first bring it to the park board and then come back.
We also, with the Lions being there, Joe did like the picnic tables and heard a lot of good comments and did say he thinks that the Lion should maybe consider donating the collapsible picnic tables to the city instead of the benches where they could have their name put on those. So he wants to discuss that with them if you guys are on board with that also.
I think the picnic tables would work better than a bench, to be honest.
We could use them for not just the amphitheater, but we could use them for the mayor's luncheon. And we, we have a lot of, we wouldn't have to move around all of the picnic tables all the time. I mean, we could still for other events that were larger like this, but at least we could grow that too, so.
So depending on if you want four-inch stick slab, which was, that's all you really need if you're not driving on it, need 20 yards of concrete. I don't really know how much concrete does a yard know.
I think we're right around 250, 250 a yard.
You any good at finishing cement?
It's a big slab.
Well, you could pour it in two different, two different shots. I mean, you're not gonna wanna, you know, depending on the weather. I mean, if it's hot and sunny out, you don't want to pour 20 yards at once. It'll get away from you way too quick. I mean, I guess, so rightfully, we're looking at 20 yards of concrete. See what you think you can come up with and if the staff can do it, well, hiring somebody to do it.
F knife river do it, we'll put their name on the dance floor.
Yeah, they could stamp their, we could put it in a.
You guys do it for us, and you put your name in it.
I guess, you know, that's a starting point to look at.
I'll make that call.
You know, that's a starting way to look at what it's gonna cost us.
I was gonna say, I, Sandy Ready Mix, I bet would be more likely to do that.
Pro bono it for their name in it?
I bet you could talk to him.
That's five grandish for the concrete.
He's a fixture of this community. I mean, my parents, that's what they, before I moved here was, that's how you know Isani, you drive into it and see cement trucks with Isani on the side of them.
You want cement on the weekends, that's where you're getting it from.
But that's just five grand just for the cement.
Something to chew on.
I think it's a great idea.
Anything else we got, Ms. Wood?
No, that's all from staff.
Anything else you gentlemen have?
You might want to think about having it dyed too, just for stain reasons, just a thought, see what X-ray would cost. But if you're gonna do it once.
Dye the concrete?
Yeah. You know, just first.
Dye it a dark green, so it blends right in with the grass.
You could be walking through the grass also.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Lundin and a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, therefore we stand adjourned.